I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next is a reading of the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are competent lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college career and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next on the agenda is the public comment section. We switched it up a little bit. I did not receive any emails and neither did Superintendent Lyons in regards to the public comment. However, if there is anyone from the public who would like to participate, I would just ask that you state your name and address. And I am not seeing or hearing any, so thank you so much. I will move on. Tonight we have our student advisors with us. I see Logan and Maggie. Are you the only two joining us this evening?
Yes.
Great. How are you guys doing? How was your vacation? Good. Nice to have a week off?
Yeah, those are relaxing.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. So what's going on at the high school?
So we're getting athletics. Logan and I were talking about it before. So at the moment, fall two sports are starting this week. So Mr. Kent shared all the information about this with the families and students, everyone participating. And then the sports that this includes are volleyball, girls' swimming, boys and girls indoor track, football, dance and cheer. So that's all the sports that are starting up this week. And then another thing we wanted to mention and talk about was the all-school assembly that we held today with Dr. Clint Smith. So it was run through the diversity leaders, so I do want to thank them because it was really, for me at least, it was an awesome experience. I really loved it. I've been talking to a lot of my friends about it. They said it was super eye-opening. So I thought it was really awesome. He was a really awesome speaker. He's a really well-informed guy. And some of the interesting stuff he said was just about his experiences growing up as a black man in America. And so it really taught me to see the world from a different point of view and in a way I couldn't really before. And so I really, I loved it so much and I am so happy that we got the opportunity to hear from Clint Smith. And I'm sure Logan felt good about it too. But yeah, so that's what we have so far. And Logan, do you want to talk about academics?
Yeah, like Maggie said, Dr. Clint Smith was very I think he resonated very well with the students at the high school. And then in terms of academics, the Massachusetts Department of Education has mandated live daily check-ins for all students. So our hybrid schedule is going to change a little bit on the asynchronous days. I'll send out an email about that to some families on Monday about changing like our previous form to like a live check-in session. Then the other thing is that the course selection period is coming among us. And there will be information coming in the next few weeks. And there will be videos shared and advisory this week in the morning. And something that Maggie and I kind of wanted to like bring up and try to support about that would be to get some more perspective on like the classes themselves. And then there's a really strong like guidance from like high school students your freshman year, but it kind of dwindles away. And it kind of comes to learn on as you try to grow, which kind of take. So if there's a way similar like another pride night or like some online thing, there's a way to try to share that with students might be now sophomore, junior, or senior, we think that would be great.
That's great. Thank you so much, Logan. Superintendent Lyons, do you, do you know if you could add a little bit to what Logan was saying? It was really hard to hear you because you were broken up a little bit. But I think what I got out of that was that you're wondering if there are any options for like access to more communication in regards to class, classes that students may want to take and choose. Yeah.
So I think Logan, this I'm sorry to interrupt you, Logan. I think you were cutting out a little bit, but I, but I think this might be an annual event for us. And that last year you talked about course selection and how it was a little bit difficult. And I think that we hooked you up with, with Mr. Robinson. And I think it was really helpful. I think we can do the same thing again. So we could probably connect tomorrow on this if you have time. Are you, you're not in tomorrow?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't realize that I cut out, so that's my bad. I know this isn't something that affects me, I'm a senior, but I still think it would be beneficial for other students. So there's some sort of like thing, or even if it was optional, but just to get some information.
I know our director of guidance, David Robinson, I know he took a lot of your feedback last year, Logan. And he put out some videos and some guidance that is very, very detailed for teachers to really try to help with the process. And I think he took a lot of your input from last year, your questions from last year to try to streamline it. But it, maybe we can grab some time. Are you in, you're not in tomorrow? When's the next time you're in school?
Um, next Monday.
So you know what? I will grab David Robinson tomorrow, but maybe we could catch up on Monday just to follow up. All right. Thanks so much.
That's great. Thank you, Superintendent Lyons. I think that's a great idea. And when you come back next, Logan, hopefully you will have some more updates in regards to how that process is going. So great idea. And thanks again for bringing it up this evening. Do you have the, yeah, Colleen, questions?
Thank you, Amy. I just had a couple of questions for Maggie and Logan. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Maggie and Logan, thank you. And Maggie, for your recount on today's presentation. So my question was going forward, do you have an opportunity in your classes, either in person or remote, to sort of have smaller breakout groups to discuss, you know, what, what the message was today and sort of how it impacted you? Do you know if that's something that you'll, you'll be able to interact with your classmates with? Because you were all, because I understand it, everyone was required to attend this. So the entire student body, right?
Yeah, so we were all on the call, like it was more like a webinar. So like we all could just like listen. And I do know that before this happened in my English and like history classes, I think, we watched videos about Clint Smith to like learn about him and like what he does. So I haven't heard about like discussing her, but I can assume that in some of the classes as well.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. I forgot my other question. I'll email you.
Okay. Any, any other questions for Maggie or Logan on the committee? No. Okay, great. Well, thanks again for participating in our meeting this evening, guys. Hope you have a great week.
Thank you, Logan. Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you. Do we have a consent agenda, Suzie?
We do. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of January 12th, 2021, and accept the minutes of the school committee policy and communications subcommittee meetings of February 3rd and February 12th, 2021. The school committee student services subcommittee meeting of February 10th, and the school committee finance and facilities subcommittee meeting of February 11th, 2021, as presented.
Just a second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Judy?
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Liakos?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our chair comments and action items. I just wanted to take this time to make a brief update regarding the happenings over the last few weeks. At our last school committee meeting on February 9th, this school committee approved a plan including a public forum that will take place this Thursday night, a future discussion with a panel of Native Americans. And that date is still to be determined at this point. And then ultimately a vote on the warrior logo for March 9th. At that meeting on February 9th, the school committee did not approve the process. That would have included a non-binding question regarding the warrior logo to be placed on the upcoming town election ballot in April. Following that meeting, a group of residents submitted a petition to the town council and requested pursuant to Massachusetts general law that a non-binding question regarding the warrior logo be placed on the upcoming town election ballot in April. Last night at the school, at the town council meeting, they voted to approve that request by a vote of five to two. And therefore, the warrior question will in fact be on the ballot in April. I think with this fact or this, these new details and also some updated information that I believe the policy communications subcommittee needs to provide to us this evening, I think they may possibly change our timeline. So with that, I would just, I guess, welcome Colleen to possibly provide us with any updates that the subcommittee may have in the, in the week that they've been doing some work on the side.
Yeah, thank you, Amy. Yeah, so we've met a couple of times, really just to go over logistics for Thursday. And I, if you'd like, I can give you some pretty detailed information so that the community knows what to expect on Thursday. So, so just to start off, so that data is solid and we will be hosting the community forum with WCAT on Thursday, the 25th at 7:30. And we are going to be hosting this in a webinar style. If the community is familiar with Zoom, it's different than this meeting is being. The platform is a little different. The format is a little different. It's just a way for us to better organize the speakers since we don't really have any information about who and how many may show up and we want to welcome all. So this is a way for us to keep it organized and structured. Our forum will be moderated by Bill Carroll, who is our town moderator. And he's really there to, to just keep things in line, organized and structured as stated. And the school committee members, we are proposing that we all obviously join, join the forum, but we will be panelists. Or we will be tagged as panelists and on Zoom so that when people show up to the meeting on Zoom and when they're, they're viewing it from there on from live or from the website, they are going to be able to see us and the administration that is participating. So it won't look like just one panelist speaking. We'll all be on the screen similar to what it looks like right now. And we'll all be flagged as, as panelists. But it is the intent of the forum or our intent that is for the community to participate in the school committee would, would sit and listen. And we would not engage in, in conversation during the forum, but we obviously are available to engage otherwise by email or other, other forms of communication. So when a speaker comes into the meeting, they'll come into the meeting as regular through Zoom and they'll be sort of, they'll be able to see what, what WCAT has produced. But they will, when they want to speak, they all identify themselves as wanting to speak. WL Cat will sort of put them in order. And when they are chosen to speak, they'll become a panelist. That allows them to be seen and heard. So we'll see their sort of square on the screen as well. And after they're done speaking, we're giving each speaker three minutes with a 20-minute warning. Getting towards the end of the three minutes, we're also providing a visual timer that will allow the speaker to understand how much time they have left as well. Bill Carroll will be sort of moderating that, organizing that with the help of WCAT in the background. When they're done, they will then sort of resume their role or their status as an attendee. But I think we would also encourage anybody that has spoken to leave the Zoom and perhaps watch the rest of the meeting or the forum on WCAT Live on their website or on Facebook. It would just help us manage the attendees and those who want to speak. So those are the, the big details that I can think of right now. The, the forum will be recorded and then will be rebroadcast as, as we decide or maybe linked on our Facebook. We have our website. I'm sorry, we haven't gone over those details so much. But are there any questions about the logistics of, yep, Mike?
It wasn't about the forum, so stop me if I shouldn't ask this. Are we still doing a survey call? Thank you.
You, Doug, do you want to speak to it now? It is part of the process that we outlined, but you know, we were sensitive to the issues that might arise with students and their protection, so.
Right. So we're, we're planning a student survey for late this week, early next. And that'll be for students in grades eight through 12. We thought the students rising to the high school in grade eight, we would capture their thoughts and, and as well as students nine through 12. We're also preparing.
A question, Doug, and that'll, is for the community survey, how have we decided who, you know, what segment we're going to send it to? Any information on that?
I don't have information on that at this point in time, Mike. But we're, we're still developing the survey itself, right? So one will go to faculty and staff and one will go to the community. Right. And we're assuming it's going to be pretty much the same, but that's where we're at. Yep.
Okay.
Thanks. Mike, to that, to that question, we have been able to work with Jen McDonald in, in communicating just the logistics for our community forum. So I don't know if you subscribe to any of the, or our community members. We would encourage you to subscribe to the town websites. You can sort of check boxes on what you're interested in. So that allowed us to get our message out to 1,300 more residents outside of school messenger, because we would obviously be able to share through school messenger. But we've all, Jen McDonald has agreed to communicate, well, the, the prior communication, but also going forward, we can, we can use the same sort of system that the town is using, or at least her database, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Thursday? Tom?
I'm, I'm sorry. It's not a question for Thursday.
Okay. Is it about the, the process at all or something else?
No, it's about the process, but it's not about Thursday.
Okay.
Is, okay. Yeah. So I'm thrilled to see that this, that the surveys are, are still part of the mix. I knew that that was something that you, you subcommittee folks brought up two weeks ago. So I thank you for not only for moving that forward and keeping that, keeping that part of it. I, I think it's entirely reasonable, the, the other student surveys that you're getting and that, that won't be, that really won't be challenging either to get out or to collect data around that. That's a pretty standard course. When, when we talk about the community, this is, this is one of two questions. We, do we mean the school community as in the 3,000 families that are attached to the Wakefield Public Schools? Or do we mean the community at large, which is, or both?
I, I think we mean both, Tom. I think we're putting something out to the, the community. It would be the community at large.
Okay. So we, so we would go to the, to the, you know, round number 3,000 families. We'll go to the all students in grades eight through 12.
Yep.
Go to 3,000 plus families attached to which that have students in, in grades pre-K through 12, right?
Yep.
And then whatever, whatever compliment we can, we can make best efforts around. And I think what you said, Colleen, was perfectly reasonable. The people that have signed up to get town communications means they want to be connected. So that's, that sounds perfect. One thing I would, would, would advocate, whether it's part of a, a school committee vote on the process or, or something to consider between now and when you report next. But one thing I would advocate in the sequence of events with these two surveys, I think one of the, one of the most important things that, that I think we landed at last meeting when we voted to move forward with it, with the process really was to, right, was to come about with a, with a public, you know, more of an awareness effort, right? An educational effort, an educational drive to, to collect information through forums and surveys, to engage and, and welcome to our community, the Native American representatives from the tribes of Massachusetts who can speak, who can speak with, with great authority. So I, I think this is a wonderful educational effort that I, that I hope that, that the town embraces. I mean, we're, we're putting this up not just really for our own good, but really for the entire community to take, I think, real strong advantage of. And as, as Amy, Amy mentioned, you know, town council's action last night and supporting, moving it to the ballot, I think is another, obviously, mechanism to, to receive public, you know, public information. So I think, but where I'm going with all of that is I think it may be useful, if not appropriately sequential, to have the surveys go out after the Native American panel and not before the Native American panel. We've put in place sort of a process that, that seeks to inform, you know, the respondent, whether you're, whether you're to vote on a matter as a voter or, or one of us, seven voters on the matter, or the community at large who is seeking, who is seeking to respond to a survey. And I think if we had an opportunity to provide, you know, input prior to a key piece of that information being available, that might, you know, that might be out of, might be out of sequence.
Yep, Mike.
A question on the survey. I think it's great you're doing a survey. Timetable, like we send this survey out tomorrow, how long do we allow to get responses, tabulate the results? Or any idea of what we're talking at? Is it two weeks, three?
So, so Michael, generally in the, generally in the past, we've kept surveys open for two weeks. So.
Now we get the results and I assume they're fairly easy to tabulate because they're all electronic.
Correct. Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Do you have any additional information about the timeline? You know, with the Native American panel or because I do think that things are kind of now with the surveys affecting the timeline as well. So if anybody, if nobody has any other questions in regards to the process on Thursday night, Colleen, maybe you can look forward with that piece? If you have any information to share?
So Amy, you had shared earlier with us and thank you for doing that. Greg has, has worked a great amount on trying to solidify the panel discussion details. So Greg, do you want to take over?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Colleen. So first of all, just want to thank all the, my colleagues for supporting this idea of pulling, pulling together a panel of Native American representatives that can inform our deliberations. So when I started, I, I looked at it with a couple of criteria in mind. One was, well, the first thing I did was checked open dates. Obviously, this is among other things going to be a scheduling challenge. And we didn't, we didn't have a lot of open dates between now and March 9th, which under the plan we approved was the last time that the school committee would, would gather and deliberate. So eventually I landed on March 17th, a Wednesday, as the proposed date. And we can, we can talk about the, the pluses and minuses of that. But I also spoke, spoke to Doug as well about the idea of incorporating some work from our educators at Wakefield High who have done some research around the town's history and, and its engagement with Native Americans. And we thought, you know, to Tom's point, that that would be a really a nice opportunity to showcase the work of our educators and, and, and share some, some, some good history. So that, that was part of the, part of what I thought about. I started with Rhonda Anderson, who is the state's commissioner of Indian Affairs for Western Massachusetts. She was recommended to me by Senator Lewis, who's worked with her on legislation that he's worked on in, in the state senate. And she reached out to several Native American representatives. Each of them, the, the criteria was they had to have some official tribal affiliation and, and be based here in Massachusetts. And that, and that, of course, they were willing to come and speak and engage in a discussion with the school committee. So the basic outline that I have is an opening presentation. Well, first, of course, introductions. An opening presentation from Wakefield Public Schools educators. Let me see, get back to my line here. Just take me a sec. A presentations from each of the panelists and then a Q and A session with the members of the school committee. The chair, Amy, would facilitate this discussion. I had set aside 90 minutes for it, but it, it may take closer to two hours depending on how, how many panelists we have. And of course, how many, how many questions each of us has. So we might think about just setting aside two hours for it. And so that, that's the basic outline. And I sent you all a draft of both an invitation to the panelists and a, and a, and an outline of the panel itself for your consideration. And if the, the committee approves it tonight, then, you know, I can work with Doug to get formal invitations out to the panelists and then we can go from there. So that's a, that's a basic summary.
Yep, Mike.
First of all, I want to thank the policy committee. It's not very often you can say, thank God, I'm on the labor relations committee. That doesn't happen very often. I'm sure Tom would commiserate with that as well. So great, just kind of your thoughts. And I know you went through Senator Lewis. Any sense of, of the, I don't know how to describe it, sort of the distribution of viewpoints? So we kind of hear as much as we can from all sides of this. How are you feeling about the composition of the committee right now? I know it's hard because you have.
Well, I don't, I honestly don't know what the position is on, what, what, what position each of these potential panelists have taken on, on the issue of, you know, Native American imagery in schools. I know in general, most Native Americans, the, the vast majority of them, believe this, the practice of using imagery of this kind should end. But that's, you know, that's the general comment. So I'm not, I'm not sure. My guess is that, that this panel would be representative of that, that general consensus. But that's about as much as I know. You know, as you, as you saw, in addition to the individuals to whom Rhonda introduced me, we are also planning to, to invite Richard Dick Baird, a Wakefield native and someone we've talked about many times, his son Leonard Rose, who runs Baird's Trading Post. I think Leonard lives in North Reading. And, and then, of course, someone from, as we mentioned, someone from the Massachusetts Center for Native American Awareness, which is a nonprofit based in Danvers, Massachusetts, that, that I, I became familiar with when I worked at the Mass Cultural Council. They were a grantee of ours. And I think Tom has worked with their educators in the Boy Scouts. So we have some familiarity with them. Again, not knowing their position on, on the issues, we're going to wrestle with, wrestle with, with them, but.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep, Colleen.
So I don't know if it's appropriate to say now, so given the proposed date of 3/17, and Amy, I think you were, you were kind of getting to this point. So our proposed date of March 9th, which was outlined in the process, I think if we approve the 3/17 date, then we would obviously react to that, you know, and we would, we would, depending on further discussion that might happen, we would vote, or we would propose that we move the deliberation to after the 3/17 panel discussion.
Sorry, I meant to add that, thanks, Colleen. Yeah, that, that the assumption would be, you know, we, we'd have the panel, then, you know, we'd be meeting in our next formal meeting of the school committee on the 23rd, less than a week later. And then we could deliberate and as a group decide whether or not we want to take a vote then, or not.
And, and also maybe take into consideration Tom's point about timing on survey as well.
Suzy, did you have a question?
I did. Greg, in your, your proposed agenda, it says, "Brief history of the Warrior name and logo." Is that also going to be a Wakefield educator that gives that background?
You know, good, that's a good question, Suzy. I, 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 original idea was that that would be incorporated, integrated into what's presented by the educators. But Doug, Doug and his team are, are, have already done some work around that. Doug, but, but I don't know where, where he and his team are on that. So maybe I'll let him answer that before I answer you.
Sure, Suzy, one of the things that we're going to get out tomorrow is a very, a short, brief history with some hyperlinks on a kind of a one page or a little bit more than a page, which just gives a timeline about, you know, the inception of the Warrior logo, when it appeared in yearbooks as, as we look back through. And it gives a chronology, right? Where it showed up, you know, who was using it, what it looked like, you know, with, with actually, with actual hyperlinks to the yearbooks, right? Which is, which is very informative and, and education, right? And so there's also some other references to mass Native American tribes that have, have kind of taken a position on this. There is a reference to the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights. And there's just some other, there's another page that was developed by Diana Ho and the diversity leaders around kind of the indigenous peoples and the Native American history of Wakefield. That, that one page or that document will be shared out tomorrow. And so it's, it's actually a very, very informative document. And as you look back, you can really see how things have changed over time, right? And, and what's also really educational as well is the number of different iterations of the imagery that has been used and, and for different groups, right? So it's, it's, it's really, it's really worth a look, but we will be sending that out tomorrow.
Yeah, Suzy was just going to add, I think, you know, the, since Doug and his team are able to get that out to the public, then we would, on the night of the panel, we would just do a very brief kind of quick overview, not get just, you know, just so we can provide as much time as possible for the panelists and for our discussion with the panelists.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? You know, I, I just have a comment. It does appear that, you know, these new updates, they do change the timeline at this point. You know, I think that we certainly want to ensure that we provide enough time for the Native American panel to occur. Actually, starting with Thursday, with the public forum, listening to what the public wants to do to participate in that. And then also obviously moving forward with the Native American panel on the 17th. And then the surveys that it sounds like we want to try and get out as well. To me, that certainly does change the timeline a bit, leaving it open-ended. And then on top of that, because of the town council's vote last night, and because I also agree that it's extremely important for us to listen and to hear from all the residents in Wakefield, I would like to make a motion. I move that the school committee update our existing timeline to provide that a vote regarding the Warrior logo take place after the town election on April 27th.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, just Amy, could you just explain your rationale for, for specifically delaying it till after the election?
Well, it sounds as though, you know, we have a tight timeline coming on, coming up on us, obviously. And I want to make sure that we provide ourselves enough time to deliberate. And, you know, it sounds like, you know, we've done different surveys with the student services subcommittee as well. And sometimes they do get delayed a bit. So two weeks is certainly a responsible timeline, but it could go beyond that as well. And I just feel like if we really want to be responsible and ensure that we make the, you know, the, the proper decision after hearing everything, hearing the information from the public forum, the Native American panel, the surveys from the people. And then, you know, ultimately, the town, the town, the, the town residents, after the election, I feel like, since it is a non-binding referendum, we, it would be, I, I think it would just be in the purview of the school, the school committee to really have all the information we would need after the 27th vote. Does anybody have any other comments or, yes, Tom?
Yes, thank you, Amy. And, and thank you for, for that motion. And this gives us a good opportunity to really have a conversation, really to expand what is a legitimate process. I mean, one of the things that notwithstanding some of our, some of our critics, one of the things that I think we wanted to do all along was to put together an open process that allowed as many people to participate and share opinions as possible. I don't think any one of us disagreed with, with that being the premise. And I think the policy and subcommittee, excuse me, Policy Communication Subcommittee has provided us with lots to think about, a, a, a good outline of, of time and a good outline of openness and availability for people to participate in a variety of ways. I don't think we're at a point where as we could say that anyone that wants to participate in some way or contribute comment in some way is in any way excluded. That with, notwithstanding that dozens and dozens of emails and texts and social messaging and letters to the editor and every, everything else that's been occurring. So I, I think this is a great opportunity to just further add credibility to an open process. And so with that in mind, a concern that I would have about voting, not voting prior to the election is that we then, we then, I, I think we're taking, we would be taking a, a, a bit of a detour from something that's fairly commonplace. One of the things that I like sort of as a policy guy is that we have normalized a, a, a public conversation in, in this way. We have brought, we've made it an academic and educational process by which people can contribute. The information gets collected, the data gets dispersed. The committee has an, several opportunities to, to share it and pull it apart and think about it. And then, just as we do in any matter, on an annual basis or on a special basis that goes before the public, whether it's town meeting or the ballot, any elected board that has a matter going to the ballot has an expectation that the board that's impacted by that puts together, takes a vote on it. We take a vote on the budget every year, and that we ask the voters to vote on it. We take a vote, we take, when we sponsor a warrant article to, to replenish the special education revolving fund, we take a vote on that. When we ask the voters to, to devote on, on a debt exclusion, to rebuild the Galvin or to renovate the high school, which we'll do one day, we will take a vote on those matters. So I think, I think it's in our interest to normalize these processes, you know, more so than to create it and make it look unique and different. I think we have an obligation to take a vote and let the community know what those, what its elected officials believe going into an important ballot question. So I, I think we should normalize it. I think there's almost an expectation that we take a vote ahead of time. I would, however, be, be open to also part of the process, in support of what you're saying, Amy, is to make part of the process that we also take a vote after the election. That I think that, that if we were to, if we can articulate the best and most open, transparent process possible that includes an advocacy vote, after all this data was collected, all this public forums, Native American panels, survey data from parents, survey data from students in grades eight through 12, we then take a position on that information, then the community chimes in, and then the school committee, as it is reconstituted after the election, takes another position on it. I think the more open and the more public debate we have on this, the more the community will feel heard. So I feel very strongly that we need to take a vote beforehand. But if I, if you would be open, I would make a friendly amendment to include your motion that says let's take a vote after the April 27th election, but we would, could include the process to take a vote beforehand. I, I'm, I'm also not sure the timeline is actually that tight. You know, we, we're, we've got, we've got something like nine weeks or more now. And, and, you know, we will have three meetings between, three regular meetings, between March 17th and April 27th. Never mind having a special meeting, which we do fairly commonplace too. So I think there's honestly, respectfully, plenty of time for us to, for, for us to have a meeting on this for the, the purpose of vote. I don't think we need to, maybe we don't need to decide on it tonight. Maybe let the policy committee land at a, a right date, because so we're not shuffling dates every, every meeting. But I think it is important that we take a vote beforehand, and I'm fully supportive of your, of the part of your motion, Amy, that, that speaks, we should take a vote afterwards as well. But I think, I think, I think, I think it continues to be our obligation as school officials, and this is part of the duty that we're, that we're elected to perform.
Yes, Mike.
Interesting proposal, Tom. Taking a vote twice, it'd be interesting. So just to play that out a little bit, so we take a vote before the election, and let's say we decide to eliminate the Warrior logo. And then we take one afterwards and we decide to keep the Warrior logo. I assume the one after is what takes precedent on that vote, correct?
Yes.
So why don't we just take one after the election, since that's going to take precedent regardless?
So, not, not to be terribly redundant, but I assume the question's to me. I think it is commonplace. It is expected, it is, it is normal for a, a elected body to take a vote going into an action that the public is taking on a matter that is before that body. This, as, as the couple of examples that I use, again, not being redundant, but we do this every year on, on budgets. We do it every year on, on, on special spending. We do it routinely when we ask for special warrant articles for, you know, for debt exclusions or for capital, capital spending. We do it all the time on a ru, on a routine basis when the public is considering a school matter. To me, it's, it's, it's almost, almost obvious to be, to be blunt, but certainly common and not extraordinary at all for the body that is elected to, to consider these matters, chime in on these matters. Especially since we are laying out this, we are laying out, we are articulating a really wonderful and open process that, that certainly allows so many people to contribute. I just think that we, we should be the first as elected officials to do this work, to, to chime in.
If I may, Greg and Suzy, I, I just echo, you know, Mike's suggestion and our comment about, you know, why vote twice? This is, just for the record, I, I, I agree. I think that we can take our time, we can get all the information that we need. And, you know, this particular situation isn't like anything that any of us have really ever experienced. It is unique. And now that this particular question will be on the ballot, I think that we need to address that. And, you know, I think that's a huge chunk of the, of the pie that we need to make sure that we hear back from. And, and, and that's kind of where I would feel the most comfortable to do, in addition to doing our due diligence and, and collecting all the information from everything that will lead up to that. I think that's the most responsible way, it's the most equitable way. And I also feel like in terms of the surveys and the other outlets that we plan to try and get information from people, I do think it still sort of eliminates the opportunity for our senior citizens who may not have access to any social media or any technology at all, where, you know, they may come out and, and want to have a say as well. So I think that we should acknowledge that part as too. Greg, did you want to add something?
Yeah, thanks, Amy. I just wanted to, I, I, I guess I wanted to reemphasize Tom's point, and I, I think I've said this from the beginning. You know, this is a, this is a school logo, this is a school issue. There's no question in anybody's mind that this is solely the responsibility of the school committee in concert with the Wakefield Public Schools Administration to decide, right? Ultimately, it's going to be our decision, right? So we have a responsibility to inform the public, to educate the public, and, and in doing so, to vote, I think, in advance of a plebiscite. I, when Tom was speaking, I, I just kept thinking of the, of town meeting. When every warrant article comes up, up comes the finance committee, the town council or the school committee, and a representative from each of those bodies says, "We recommend favorable or we do not recommend favorable action." The citizenry in town meeting looks to the elected leadership of the community for guidance. It doesn't mean that that guidance is the final word, it just is guidance. And I think we have a responsibility as the school committee to provide that guidance to anyone who's voting in, on a non-binding public resolution that's being put on the town ballot. I also think that the responsibility in this case is particularly acute because there's a tremendous amount of misinformation. Uh because uh there's a tremendous amount of info- of misinformation out there. Um which logo uh we're talking about. Uh whether and and uh and and uh how we're we're debating the issue of the warrior name. Um we have a responsibility to inform um and elucidate uh the questions. That uh that are being debated out there. And the best way that we can do that is to deliberate and take a vote. Now. You know, um we we haven't set an actual date for a vote. All we've said is we're going to deliberate. Um we said it on March ninth, now we're asking to push that back a couple of weeks. That can give us an extra couple of weeks to deliberate and hear from our Native American panelists. Um so for those reasons, I I agree with Tom and I would add just one more. Um which is that um and I think Tom mentioned this, the school committee. After April twenty eighth is a different school committee than the school committee that's here now. Um I may not be here and I'm I'm an appointee, I wasn't elected. Uh Darcy may not be here, she's an appointee, but we know that uh Colleen won't be here. No one has done more work on this than Colleen. Um and pushing a vote until after twenty eighth specifically disenfranchises her. And that's another reason I think we should reject that. Thanks.
Thanks Greg, yes Suzie. Kind of related to what Greg just said, do we even know procedurally if it's um. Valid to push a vote, to vote on something that would say we're going to vote on. Something in the future when the the actual school committee would be made up, potentially made up of different people. Because I'm not sure that that is procedurally something that you can do. Um so I I'm just, I I feel like we can't, I I would want to clarify that that's even possible. Because it seems strange to me that you could push a vote off. To then be in front of a number of potentially a a wholly different looking committee that has not been involved in. Any of these conversations. So to me, I, before we would vote on this, I would want to procedurally understand if that's possible unless we've got a. Uh Robert Rules expert on here that would know that.
Uh yes, Tom.
Uh I wouldn't consider myself a Robert Rules expert, so if if that's a qualifying. Uh requirement to provide an answer, then then I'm I'm out. But what I would say. Um is it's is it's uh fa- fairly common for one board to. Uh you know, even set a calendar in play that takes, that has a twelve month, you know, life to it. That uh as the board gets reconstituted, is at its, it's at its liberty to change that calendar. So even if we were to say that we were wanted to take a vote or recommend a vote be taken after the April twenty seventh election. It would be incumbent upon the new board to actually set that date, not necessarily um us.
Got it. So we can't set a date in the future, but we could put the vote off.
We we certainly could set a date and it would be, it would be that new board's um. Authority to either a- agree with that or to change it. We can certainly set a date, there's no, there's nothing. I will say, there's nothing in Robert Rules that would prohibit us from setting a date in the future for future action. Um but when a new board is constituted, it it then has the liberty uh to re- reset its own calendar.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Uh yes, Mike.
So a couple of things. So the only way to force is the wrong word, but I'll use it for purposes of illustration. This this vote takes place after the election is if we don't vote on it before the election. That's the only way we can guarantee that that will happen. Otherwise, the incoming. Board could decide, let's say we vote before then, they they may decide, we're not gonna vote on this. So there won't be a vote after the election. There's a potential, there could not be a a vote. And my second point is from a timeline perspective. So we talked about. Postponing the survey until after we have the uh panel discussion with the American Indians. So that's gonna be on the seventeenth, we believe. We we ju- we talked earlier about the fact that that survey would take roughly two weeks, Doug had said. Let's say a week after that to tabulate the results. So so now we're into the first week in April. Somewhere probably near the end of the first week, because two weeks from March seventeenth is March thirty first, so it's. It's somewhere around April seventh by the time we get the results. And then we could, we could vote on it. At that point in time in theory, and that's obviously probably the best possible scenario from an. Uh speed perspective that that could happen. So but but back to my other point. Uh and it's an interesting proposal, Tom, but there's, as we all know, there's no guarantee. That the next school committee will ever vote on this issue. Absolutely not. Even if we don't decide to vote now, there's no guarantee they're going to vote. With the new crowd coming in as of April twenty seventh. Um if we vote. Before, then you know, we we've made a decision. And um so. Uh there's no guarantees in either case, we vote before and perhaps they'll vote afterwards. We don't vote. And they may decide not to vote as well. So I think that's really the difference of two votes versus no votes. It likely, my opinion, increases the chance that there will be a vote after the new administration comes in. If in fact, we don't vote beforehand. That's my opinion only. Thank you.
Um uh Darcy, did you have a, I saw your hand up, thank.
I I just wanted to respond, I don't know, a couple of people back, can't remember now. Um hard to keep track. Um so I agree that we have put forth a transparent process. And although Mike at the last meeting brought up this idea of putting this on the ballot and that was voted down. And we believe that we put forth the best possible transparent. Process that would incorporate as many people as possible. But given the fact that that was not enough for enough members in the community. That they were willing to bring this to town council. And then the town council turned around and agreed to put it on the ballot tells me. That our process is transparent and inclusive as we think it is, it's not. And so what disadvantage do we have of not just seeing this through? You know, I understand the vote, I guess, before, after, but I mean, it just. In light of the events last night, it just seems to me that it's our responsibility to. To rethink this timeline and I'm ensure the fact that. Everyone has an opportunity, you know, to um. Have a say because this clearly matters to a lot of people in this community. Whether or not we agree or not, it 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 is what it is.
Thank you, Darcy. Um yep, Colleen.
Um yeah, th- there there are so many good points, you know, and and a lot of it or some of it is is also opinion, uh you know. Most of this discussion is is opinion, but there are, there are some things that are factual as well, but. My reservation, I wanted to speak to Greg's point and and this is sort of personal, I guess, but I I'm not just speaking for myself. I don't think. That this this board can change. Ex- it, there's an extreme change happening on April twenty eighth. Um and and the board and I do like, I value. That we are informed, this this group sitting in front of us right now. Um. You know, all of the, all of the reading of emails, the conversations that we're having, the planning of the process. You know, we're all participating in this right now and so is our community. And I think we owe it to our community. To sort of make an an efficient decision uh as well as inclusive. And and I think that's sort of what we were trying to outline in our process because. We also receive emails that ask us to please move forward from this. Because we are in the midst of much larger discussions and goings on. I mean, we all, most of us joined a conversation today. With Senator Lewis and uh none of this was discussed, you know, the 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 reopen, uh the getting kids back to school. Uh when that happens is discussed and. Uh budget is discussed and and it's not that we won't do the work that is put in front of us. We absolutely do and we will con- continue to. During this meeting, but our energy is absorbed. You know, there there was a lot of talk today about burnout. Well, teachers are burnt out, students are burnt out, administrations burnt out, parents are burnt out, and honestly, we are burnt out. You know, I don't know any of us who can say that we're not impacted by the energy that we have spent doing this. And I am committed to doing this to the very end and my end day is four twenty seven. But I am a committed member until then and I pride myself and I think my committee does too and I know they do. And I'm so fortunate to work with all of you that. I I that is a point, I I it's a personal one, because I'm not sure it really matters in the grand scheme of things of elections, but. I am in this, you know what I mean? And I I and I want the work to sort of fall in in the process that we've all taken and participated in. Without the thought that it just doesn't matter after a certain date, you know. Um so that that's one of my reservations. The other reservation. Um that I have, I I I understand and agree that a non-binding referendum is informative. I I always fall back on the concern that. There is a vote or a a question, you know, and the question is very sort of um yes or no, you know. It it doesn't provide perspective like we're gaining from these other discussions and and panels and. Uh even our emails that we receive, right? We don't really gain perspective from a yes or no. And our our sort of task is more than a yes or no, really. You know, we've outlined maybe four options when it comes to deciding. What we're going to do. So my reservation there is that um. Sorry, I I lost my train of thought. I told myself today, I'm not writing anything down, I'm speaking for my heart and mind and that's the end of it, but. Now I've lost my train of thought, but um when it gets to the question, I I guess my reservation there is is that we don't gain a lot of perspective. Other than yes or no. And oh, so then, after that happens, however way that goes, you know, whatever the percentage is. Our school committee, however that looks, could then vote differently. And that creates another level of tension and division in our community. And I think that we don't want to see that continue. I think that we make a vote and we collect ourselves and gather and we do better, right? I mean, I think that in any instance we have a meeting, we look to do better, whatever the outcome is. Okay, we learned all this stuff and now we're going to do better with the things that we learned. And. Having that division again, I just, I just feel like because we are divided on this. If the question doesn't align with the school committee vote in the end, whether it be a first vote or a vote after election, further division happens. We escalate the thing again and then it comes, you know, it it's, that's just my my reservation. It's not because it doesn't provide information. But the information it could provide doesn't necessarily going to align with the way the committee votes. So that's me from the heart, that's it.
Thanks, Colleen. Yep, Greg.
Yeah, thanks, Amy. Um yeah, I I I was on the call with Senator Lewis today too, as I know you were, Amy and and Suzie and. Colleen and yeah, there's a lot, we've got a lot to deal with and we should be getting back to focusing our efforts on getting kids. And working with uh Doug and his team to get kids back in school as quickly and as safely as possible. And we can't do that if we're debating the logo. And you know, um March twenty third. Uh till uh early May, that's a month, maybe a month and a half that we could lose time. Um I hadn't thought about it in those terms, but but Colleen's absolutely right. You know, we need to balance. Uh a thorough process with dispatch. Um so um I don't. I don't like the idea of pushing this back another month, month and a half. And and uh again, reiterating uh the concerns I have, that's a new school committee. And we're disenfranchising at least one member of the current one. I just think it's a bad idea. Thank you.
Thanks Greg. Um Tom, if I may, um do you mind? Um I just, I I would just like to comment that, you know, we are certainly um a well-informed group. Um. No doubt about that, right? Um and yes, we obviously have a lot more important work that that needs to be done. Um you know, but I do feel like, you know, strongly um that we don't, we don't know, we don't have all our information yet. I really don't think we do. And you know, depending on how the school committee looks after the twenty seventh of April, I mean. Whoever is sitting at the table is going to be very well-informed with the most latest and greatest. Information possible. Um and I think that if they move to um make that decision, then. They have a lot of information, they have a public forum forum information to go through, they have um. Um responses from the Native American uh panelists, um they have responses from the survey. And then, you know, they could potentially have thousands of people with voting whichever way they choose, you know. So at the end of the day, we're informed, I don't think we're informed to the max yet, but I think that we would be um. Uh at the end of um after the twenty seventh of April, um you know, and and I also just wanna um. You know, make the point that, you know, it it's still, it still matters. You know, I feel as though. People really want to be heard on this one, you know, um like Darcy said, they they took it upon themselves to file this petition. They care about this, they want to be heard, they want the opportunity to go to the ballot and and place their vote. And I just feel like, you know, it's the responsibility of the school committee to allow that to happen. And if we choose to do that tonight, then. Then I honestly feel like we can get back to business because, you know, we obviously will conduct the panel. The subcommittee can still collect all the data from the surveys, but then we won't have to worry about this, you know, and I and I say that loosely. With no um ill will, but you know, we can move on and we can focus on the work that we need to do. We can focus on the budget, we can focus on. The social, social emotional wellbeing of our students that is very concerning to all. And that is what I wish we were actually talking about as a committee. And that is quite frankly, what I wish everybody in the community wanted to argue about, but they don't. It's about the logo. So because that is, I think that we should just, you know, um acknowledge the motion and, you know, vote. To place this on the ballot so that everybody can be heard and then we can get back to work. Because I feel like that is the most important thing now. If we drag this through, then it can create more problems until that date. I just think we should decide and um move on. And get back to work. We have a lot of important stuff we have to do here. Yeah, Suzie.
So Amy, the reality is that fifteen people signed that petition, fifteen. We have heard aloud twenty-five, thirty, fifty people online, very upset about this. I'm not denying that. We are all well-informed about what is going on here. We have spent hours educating ourselves. As Colleen said, we're exhausted just from this exercise. Not that 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 doesn't mean we shouldn't go through the process, we're going through the process. We have built a process. That allows people to speak and to be heard. We are listening. That's all we're doing. That's all we've been doing for the last. How many weeks? We are hearing and listening and we're giving people the opportunity to speak up on Thursday. To fill out a survey if they can't get online. It, I don't see how we can't say that we have had enough information. To have a, to to vote. And I really, I just, I feel like we've got to get this done and off the table. Because it's exhausting all of us and we need to spend the time on getting our kids back in school more. I said it last meeting and I'm saying it again, we need to get this done. We hel- will have had this conversation for probably about an hour now. We had this conversation for at least an hour last meeting about process, about when we're gonna vote. Let's get the information and let's vote. I I'm not willing to put this off. And I want Colleen to have a seat at the table for all the frickin' work she's done on this. She gets to have a vote. I'm done.
Yep, Tom.
Uh I get, yeah, thank you, thank you, Amy and 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 colleagues. Uh um not to continue to do, you know, a beat, a a path that's already been, already been been stated. Uh but um lots of real thoughtful, as always, right? Lots of real thoughtful comments tonight and um. And and so a couple of things come to mind with regard to um to to some of the realities that are before us. Um the largest reality being in perhaps, maybe not the largest unfortunately, but the most important. Uh is what we've all said probably from the very beginning, is that this is a tremendous distraction. I certainly said it loud and clear and I know others have. And we almost, this was almost predicting in a crystal ball that when we went down this path, this would be a monumental distraction. From the work that we need to do. Having said that, this is the reality, this is the path we are on. Um we can't ignore the path we're on, we haven't ignored the path we're on. I think we as a group of seven are incredibly dedicated uh elected officials and public officials. We work with. Probably one of the best superintendents and teams in the Commonwealth. Uh, and I think we're all really focused on, on getting back to, uh, to, to where, to the, the focus of things that we. Uh, that we should be on, getting kids and teachers back in school. I will say, and I'm sure these will come out in subcommittee reports, that that work is actually still being done. Um, that, that even though this, even though we're consuming an hour plus of time at school committee meetings. The work of getting kids and teachers back in classes has not halted for one minute, it is still being done, it's being done by the administration. It's being done by principals, it's being done by partnering with the, the teachers association, it's being done at subcommittee levels, and I think some of that will. Will come out when we talk about subcommittee report. But that's one of the other realities. Um, if I may, Mike being a little tongue in cheek, there were no guarantees in life, my friend, it's like death and taxes are the only two we can count on. So no matter what, no matter what we say, there's no guarantees that any vote would ever occur. So I'm not, but what I would like, and maybe I'm being a little too heartfelt on this one, I would like to trust the future board. Uh, that if we lay out a game plan, um, and know that it's been well-vetted and well-discussed, that they would follow it. I want to trust that, I want to believe that. Um, so that to me, uh, that sense of, 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 um. That sense of, of creating a valuable process that the community supports, I, I think would be meaningful, I think. A new school committee, or a newly constituted school committee would be incredibly hard-pressed. Uh, not to take either an affirming vote or to take a, a change vote, I, I, I have to believe that the new school committee would. Would sort of support a process, however, there's no guarantees in life, so, you know, it, it is, it, I guess it is what it is. Um, one of the things that I'm, I'm, I'm gonna miss. Uh, and we're gonna miss it a lot, my friend, uh, Ms. Guida. That you have such a wonderful way of speaking and articulate way of bringing things together. Uh, I'm gonna miss that, that's one of the many things I've enjoyed in the last three years. Um, you know, but, but of the many points that you said, one of the things that even, even speaks to me. Is that there is not going to be any group of seven school committee members more informed than the seven of us. Even the newly constituted school committee, even if they're watching, uh, and we have a candidate online with us tonight. Um, they're, they're not as informed as we, and we're not gonna be gonna turn over our emails that we've been getting since August to the new members. We have lived this, we have, we have lived it, we've owned it, we've participated in it fully. There is not going to be seven more informed people, right or wrong, there aren't gonna be seven more informed people come, uh, uh, April twenty-eighth or thereafter. Uh, so I think we continue to owe it to the work that we've done, to the work that Doug and his team have done. And frankly, to the work that, uh, the community is about to tell us in the next, in the next three, four weeks. So I, I see nothing wrong with the possibility of taking two votes, but certainly. A vote that, that affirms the work that we've collected in total since last August. Um, inclusive of what we've been talking about, um, at, on and off since that time. Um, I also think that, um, you know, one of the other realities, right, is, is it's on the ballot. I mean, I was, I was opposed to it at the last meeting, but I'm welcoming it, it is what it is, I mean. A, as Darcy said, we're on this path, or Darcy said it is what it is, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Dr. Burns. Um, but it is what, here we are, we're on this pathway, let's welcome it, let's embrace it, and let's use it to inform our decision. In fact, frankly, the new school committee, all it will have is the election. We will have all the other pieces of data to inform, uh, to inform our, our decision, so. I, I see nothing wrong with, with rolling out a process that, that speaks to two votes. One that speaks to what the, uh, what is happening ahead of time, um, and one that may be affirming or changing. The new school committee would absolutely have, have that vote, but, so what, what is more, what is more. I guess meaningful to me right now of the realities of the path that we are on, uh, let's take those, let's own those, and let's, um. And let's keep our, our feet squarely on the ground and let's, let's lay out for this community a legitimate, honorable, open discussion. Um, to inform the school committee as it's presently constituted, we take a vote on it, the community then reacts to. Uh, all the things that it reacts to, including our vote. And then, and then we go from there, I, 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 I think, I think it adds, I think it adds ought, uh, to a, um. To, to, to an already, uh, legitimate, uh, a legitimate process, I don't, I don't think it takes away from it at all. Um, and if we also were to think. Um, I don't want to say naively, but if we were to think that if, just because if we take a vote off the table. That this isn't going to be consuming the month of April in this community, that's naive, I mean, it is what it is, friends. So there, there's no getting this off the table, we, we, it's, it's on the ballot. Let's accept it, let's embrace it, let's roll forward, but to think that if we don't take a vote on it. That it isn't going to be topic one, whether you're not topic one, but a big source of topic. Around, around town, then we're just being naive on that, let's just embrace the realities around what it is and do the very best we can. Uh, to, uh, support and inform the community and ourselves. Um, and do it, do it its best, do it, you know, make, you know, warrior pride, let's do this right.
Uh, yes, Mike.
So, uh, very good comments, Tom, I appreciate all the information, um, I suspect that even if we do vote. This isn't going away. Because there will be an election, the Tom's comment, if we think we're gonna vote and everything's gonna magically go away. And we're gonna be able a hundred percent exclusively focused on other stuff, I think we're kidding ourselves, it's not gonna happen. And I think it won't truly be resolved until after the vote. And whatever, whether three of us are pretty sure are coming back. Another one may come back based on the election results in that regard too, so, um. You know, I, I, I just don't see this going away, uh, whichever path we choose, I, I agree with you a hundred percent on that, Tom, so.
It's not, let's own it and do our best.
That's it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, again, you know, we, um, are continuing this discussion and, uh, over an hour here. Um, you know, uh, the school committee, um. I, I, I just think at this point. Um, we should really take into consideration the fact that the town council moved forward to place this on the ballot. We are informed, I personally don't feel as though we are as informed as we should be until after the twenty-seventh. And again, um, there are no guarantees, no one really knows who's actually going to be sitting on the committee. But the fact remains, in my opinion, that the information will be there, the people may not, but the information will be. Um, you know, in terms of all the results from all the surveys and all the panels, um, and the election. So I do think that would be very easy to share with our fellow school committee members, um, uh, come after April twenty-seventh. And I, and I quite frankly, just feel like we owe it to the community to move forward and, um, you know, vote on this. After, um, the, uh, twenty-seventh election. Yep, Greg.
Thanks, Amy, um, let me make a proposal, um, I respectfully would ask, Amy, that you withdraw the motion. And that, um, we gather on, uh, as a school committee on March twenty-third. Uh, with no expectations of voting, um, but, but deliberating, and if, uh. If you feel at that point that you don't have enough information to vote, then make this motion then.
Um, I mean, I, I, again, with the Roberts rules, um. I, I would just like to, um, suggest that we, that we take the vote on my motion that I placed on the table.
That's okay, just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Um, so with that said, um. I, I guess we need to do a roll call vote on my motion. If you, if you'd like for me to read it again, I will, or.
Again, Amy.
Okay, thank you, okay, hold on, um. Okay, um, I move that the school committee update our existing timeline to provide that a vote regarding the Warrior logo take place. After the town election on April twenty-seventh. So that motion has already been made and seconded, so I guess we're ready for a vote here.
Hey, Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Ms. Fair.
No.
Mr. Markham.
No.
Ms. Guida.
No.
Mr. Vudrow.
Yes.
Dr. Burns.
Yes.
Mr. Liakos.
No.
Okay, thank you, so this vote, uh, this motion does not pass. Um. And, uh, I guess we're moving on with the agenda here.
Can I, Amy, can I, I guess we, we didn't really resolve the, uh, the panel, so could I just make a motion? Uh, for the school committee to support the, uh, Native American panel discussion, um, as presented. Uh, for the date of, uh, March seventeenth, and then, um, extending our deliberations to the following. Uh, full school committee meeting of, uh, March twenty-third, just to codify that.
Was that a motion?
Yes, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Um, yes, Tom.
Um, so, uh, let me just ask, um, we're in that, I think it's important, especially to inform. The administration and the role that it's gonna play here, is we're in this calendar or this sequence, are the surveys going to be? Uh, I would like to, us to consider or perhaps even add into the motion, if you'd be open to an amendment. That the surveys go out or be prepared to go out on Thursday, March eighteenth. They would be open for two weeks, um, and then we deliberate, uh, you know, at, at that point. And just, so it's probably not, then maybe. May twenty-third, or, excuse me, March twenty-third, maybe April sixth, or whatever, I don't have a calendar in front of me, whatever that is. But I, I think we should, I think we should insert into, into the sequence of things when we want the surveys to go up. And I'm suggesting, uh, the day after the Native American panel of, of, or Thursday, the eighteen.
Uh, yes, Mike.
So I just made sure, so we currently have voted, we have decided, excuse me, that we were going to vote on March ninth. And I think we're all in agreement that that date will not work, um, so that's, that's a question. And then the question really is, once that, we agree on that, then we don't really decide on a new date. We just agree on the Native American panel discussion on March seventeenth and to send the survey out. On March eighteenth, is that correct?
Well, I think, I think that's, I think that's the, uh, Tom's intention, yeah, yeah.
Just want to make sure I had it right, yes.
I guess my only concern is, you know, uh, March eighteenth is three weeks away. Um, and, um, it would seem we've lost quite a bit of time, uh, uh. If we fail to try to get out some surveys, um. Between now and then, and then we cram the survey data in, um, in those two weeks. I, I understand where you're coming from, Tom, I just don't know, it's a, it's a bit of a logistical, um. It's a bit of a logistical challenge, um. And it's not that I don't believe, because I do believe that, um, the perspectives that we get from the Native American panelists. Should inform our deliberations, but I'm not sure that we can, um. Practically expect that that, that that could actually inform everybody's perspective who. Uh, fills out a survey, I guess that's the, that's kind of how I'm thinking about it. Yeah, well, I kinda, I mean, I, I, I appreciate that, the timeframe, the timeframe being, um, you know, a matter of, 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 of a month. Um. Not that that really, uh, we've probably done, uh, less with, uh, more rather with less time. Uh, the concern that I have is that the, the perspective, um, that the Native American panel will bring, uh, could be. Um. You know, I'm not saying it's gonna sway any votes nor, nor should it, but it's informative, right, it's kind of like having the presidential election before the debates. Right, you all know who the candidates are, you know who they are in the summer, but if you don't get through the September and October debates between the. You know, then, then, you know, it's, it's having the election before the debate. That it's a huge piece of conversation, uh, from some credible, reliable. Um, uh, really unengaged, um, un, uh, uh, you know, dispassionate, uh, people. Uh, meaning people that aren't in town that have a strong feeling one way or the other. Uh, so I think there is tremendous value to having the community here, um, and be able to engage the panel before they. Take a survey, even for the students, more important, I mean, you know, let's not, let's not ever forget that this, this should be, should, we should be focusing. Not exclusively, because I don't want to leave anyone out of, of, of the opportunity to comment. But this, this, every time the logo has changed in the last fifty years, it's been driven by kids. Kids are driving it again, and I, I, we, we should credit them with standing up and, and speaking their minds and giving us their thoughts. Uh, and I would hate to have, ask them to provide a survey. Uh, that, that they're probably gonna thoroughly enjoy, uh, meaning, uh, uh, the Native American panel. Anyway, I, 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 I don't think it, it screws up the sequencing too much, but I will support, uh, support whatever the policy subcommittee decides to do on timing. I just think that having the survey after our two public events. Makes, frankly, makes the most sense in sequence, that's all, I, I'll be done now, thank you.
Like, I would just like to make the comment that, you know, we're obviously willing here to move a lot of dates. Um, back, but not willing to move the date that, um, you know, that we're actually going to make the vote. So, um, because of that, I'm just not comfortable moving forward, um, voting on anything that has a date before the, uh, April twenty-seventh election here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, Mike.
I'm sorry, I don't think we're gonna vote on a date.
No.
My understanding is there will be no voting on any date whatsoever. And I, the only vote, yeah.
Yeah, we're just moving the time, we're just moving the timeline, uh, back or adjusting. Um, so I guess that was my point, um, but was your motion seconded, Greg?
Yes.
Yes, is, is there any more, uh, questions or comments for that?
Greg, could you repeat it again one more time, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I, I'm sorry, I didn't write it down, but, but I'll try to repeat it, so, um. For the school committee to, um, uh, endorse the, uh, uh, March seventeenth. Panel discussion with the Native American representatives as presented. Um, and, uh, extend our deliberations on the Warrior logo and Warrior name. To our following full school committee meeting on March twenty-third.
Thank you. Um, roll call vote?
Ms. Purcell.
Yeah.
Ms. Fair.
Yes.
Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Ms. Guida.
Yes.
Mr. Vudrow.
Yes.
Dr. Burns.
Yes.
Mr. Liakos.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, uh, moving on with the agenda, superintendent's remarks.
Thank you very much, uh, Amy, I appreciate it, um. Thank you, everyone, for your, your comments about the mascot, I think you've covered just about everything there, so. There was a bullet on, under my second B to, uh, give more information on the Warrior logo, I think we've covered that, if that's okay.
We appreciate that very much, Jack, I speak for the rest of my committee members.
You're certainly welcome, Mike, um, A- Amy, if it's okay with you, I would like to go out of order. And invite Brendan, um, to give an update on athletics for fall two. Um, just so that he can, I know he's got a couple of things going this evening, and I'd love to get him in and out, you know, and, uh.
Of course, can't wait to hear it, Brendan.
Thanks for having me, uh, appreciate it, uh, it's always good to be back on the school committee with all of you, um, so. Last week was kind of a crazy week, it was the final week of winter sports, uh, wrapped up well. Um, all of our winter sports, uh, qualified for the middle six league tournament. Um, so it was good, good ending to all of our seasons, uh, for the winter season. And fall two sports just started yesterday, Monday, um, so fall two sports include. Volleyball, girls swimming, boys and girls indoor track, dance, cheerleading and football. Um, so practices and trials started yesterday, games won't start until middle to late March. Um, we are very fortunate, uh, we were scrambling right up to the last minute to find facilities for a lot of our sports teams, so. Uh, as of two weeks ago, we didn't have a pool for our swim team, uh, fortunately, we were able to get time at Mystic Valley Charter School in Walden. Uh, pretty good times, two, four o'clock, uh, practices, so it works well for our students. Um, also, um, you look outside, obviously, there's still snow on the ground and, uh, that was a huge issue for our. Indoor, which is really outdoor track now, uh, practicing outside. which is really outdoor track now, uh, practicing outside as well as football. And so we're able to work with our, uh, Wakefield DPW and, uh, big thanks to Joe Conway and Dennis Fazio. Uh, they were able to clear the field and track for us. Um, just, just in the nick of time, Monday morning, they're out there working hard. So, um, I, I know they were very concerned. This is something that typically they don't do. Uh, they, they, you know, very nervous about potentially damaging the field. Um, but this was really the only opportunity that our Fall 2 athletes had, you know, um, in a very short window. And had we not cleared the field, um, they would have lost out on their season most likely. So, um, we figured, you know, probably, we're probably not going to see another global pandemic in our lifetime, hopefully, knock on wood. So, uh, Dennis said he would do it this one time and, um, very grateful and thankful. So, um, so far, again, knock on wood, we're two days in. Um, really the mantra is one day at a time, just like we did for fall sports and, and winter sports. Um, so, so far, things are going good and, um, looking forward to games starting up middle to late March.
Thank you, Brendan. Um, yep, Mike.
So I, I, I'm sure I speak for, uh, all the parents of winter athletes and saying, uh, what a great success that end of the season tournament was. Just exciting to have some competition that had some quote unquote beating, uh, meaning, I guess. Uh, one question I had, Brendan, is probably a hard one for the answer right now is, obviously, one of the biggest controversies with the winter season was the fact that no parent could go see their kid play, even senior parents couldn't. Um, you, you get a sense at all whether the Middle Sex League is thinking about perhaps loosening those restrictions a bit so that at least senior parents can go to see their kids play in the Fall 2 season?
Yeah, so this has already been discussed. Um, and so we're continuing to work on it. So right now, it doesn't look, to be honest, it doesn't look like, um, they're going to allow fans for indoor sports still. But for outdoor sports, so we have boys and girls track, uh, in football, both outdoors. Um, and then we will transition obviously to the spring sports outdoors. Uh, it, it looks like right now the plan is to go back to, uh, to, to spectators per student athlete like they did in the fall. Um, and, and again, that's not necessarily set in stone yet, but that's been what has been discussed so far.
Thank you, Brendan. Um, I, I would also just want to, um, thank, of course, our friends at WCAT for working in overdrive to ensure that all of us parents sitting home screaming at the TV in the living room, uh, you know, could watch our kids. It really was such a great, um, uh, 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 thing for, for all these parents to enjoy the, uh, watching their kids play was huge. And also Brendan, to you for doing the play by play, uh, at the basketball games and the hockey games. You know, it really just made it a little bit more special, especially for, at least in my, um, at least in my family, uh, the grandparents who were just bursting with pride, listening to you talk about, um, you know, all the girls, you know, that our kids have kind of grown up with. So I, I mean, really, you know, we, we made the best of what we had and I really can't thank you enough for your hard work, um, and especially our friends at WCAT too. Thank you.
Thank you. It was, it was my pleasure to call the games and I, I echo your, uh, thanks to WCAT. They were awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Brendan. Much appreciated. Thanks, thanks for being here tonight. And so I, I can just move ahead with other comments. Um, before I, I leave sports, um, to Dennis Fazio and Joe Conway, uh, they're just two of the very best facilities people that I think we've had the pleasure to work with. Um, they did, as Brendan said, um, clear the field and, and football was practicing outside yesterday in the rain. And, and, you know, and it was, it was actually great to see them out there. And, um, you would not know that it was cold and rainy. Um, I think the kids genuinely enjoyed themselves and the coaches, um, certainly, um, at the tone they were yelling, they, they were pretty excited. And so it's, it's good to see everybody out there and, and everyone moving around. So that's good. And as the ice kind of melts off the track, which it shouldn't, good very soon, tomorrow's supposed to be 50 degrees. So I think we're going to be getting our runners out there, uh, very soon as well. So more to follow there. Just a quick update on, on COVID. Um, we have 11 student cases and two staff cases right now. Um, I, so our, our numbers were down as of this past Sunday. This past Sunday, um, the 21st, we had 10 cases in about a seven or eight day window. Um, and then all of a sudden, um, right after I pushed send, I sent out a note to faculty and staff just giving an update on COVID numbers and testing on Sunday morning. Um, of course, we get the hockey email. Hockey's keeping us in business with COVID, it looks like. It's difficult for me to report. I have a little bit of a bias for hockey, but my goodness. Um, you know, we, we, we have to, we have to do some work on our, on our numbers with, uh, the positive cases around, around hockey. It's also increased our numbers, um, of students in quarantine, you know? Um, we have students at the high school, one student in particular who, who was in his fourth quarantine. Um, and so it's, it's been, it's been very difficult for some. And so, um, but we continue to chip away. Um, overall numbers in the state, uh, look like they're trending, uh, lower, which is positive. And so we're still, we are also continuing testing at least for the next two Sundays, um, on Sunday morning for faculty and staff. In two weeks, we're going to kind of reassess, um, the need to continue, um, because it's obviously this is a, affects our budget and, and we're going to assess that and we will continue if we feels, if we feel like that's what we need to do, um, to be safe and to continue to keep schools open. Um, there is a very active conversation happening right now, shifting topics. There's a very active conversation happening, uh, right now in the state. Uh, Commissioner Riley, um, was on a press conference today where he announced that it is his goal, um, to get all students back in school, um, for in-person learning, um, in April. And so I know one of the soundbites today was five days a week. Um, and I think that, that those, those statements are important, um, but, but they are political soundbites, right? And so what is still in place, and I know the committee knows this and the public, I feel like can't hear this enough. Um, COVID is still present. And as long as we need to maintain safety and mitigation strategies that include social distancing of, of six feet, um, even if we reduce it, we still do not have the space to bring 100% of our students back into school. And the important piece that I need people to hear my words on, that is not going to preclude us, um, from talking about increasing student time. So we're making a proposal to increase student time at elementary for Wednesdays. We're going to be working with the WEA, um, this week, um, to, to talk about the particulars on that. And, uh, our target audience, starting off, moving forward, is going to be elementary. And we're going to be looking to increase student time. Um, and just as a context, you know, this is what's happening in, in the entire Middle Sex League. You know, we had a meeting today with Senator Lewis, um, that was followed by, I had a, a meeting with, with new superintendents in the state. Um, and then we had a meeting, um, or a, an email roundup with the Middle Sex League superintendents, just hearing what they are planning moving forward. And we're all in the same boat. We're all looking to increase student learning time. I know that there was a question about Middleton. How is Middleton increasing their time? Uh, Middleton is part of a tri-town union, which is made up of three towns, Boxford, Middleton and Topsfield. Middleton itself has two elementary schools. It is a K6 district, right? And so there's two elementary schools. There's Fuller Meadow and Howe Manning. Uh, Fuller Meadow is, serves students in grades K2. That's it. The other elementary school serves, Howe Manning serves grades 3, 6. That's it. And so because they are small populations, because they are grade specific, they have been able to spread out, um, and increase their time. So they have the square footage, they have small class sizes, and they're able to spread out and increase their time. It's my understanding that some of their time is still remote and they're not completely back in their pre-COVID schedules, which is important to note. Um, I, I'll have more information on that in our next school committee meeting. But we are in contact, Kara is in contact, um, with other districts and we are working to learn with and from one another how we can increase student time. Um, and really the, the big driver is the social distance, right? The, the two leading points of conversation are social distance, that students need to kind of keep away from one another. Um, because at six feet, you're not going to put 25 or 30 kids in a class. And the other point of conversation are vaccinations, okay? And so tho- those two things are drivers that, that are kind of, um, I don't want to say slowing the process, but have to, those are things that have to be maintained to keep people safe right now. So that's, those are, those are big pieces. So, um, other work that we're doing right now, we are in the throes of working on curriculum. Um, we had a meeting this afternoon to get an update on, on math review curriculum. Um, we had a K12 look, um, with our, um, with Lindsay Mosca and Val Dreinen. I also want to go back to, um, the comments that Maggie started with in this meeting. Um, and Kara could probably add a, a bit about, um, Clint Smith, who is here today speaking with students. Clint Smith is a staff writer at The Atlantic, and he's a bit of a rock star on social media. Um, and he's a, a person that young people are really attracted to. And, um, the fact that, that Kara was able to work, um, with Margaret Messier and, and Jason Pavy to get him to come to Wakefield and to kind of, to work with our students today was really terrific for us. I don't know if you want to add a little bit there, Kara?
First of all, I have to give full credit to Margaret Messier and Jason Pavy for this one. I just did go for it and they took it, took it, uh, took the lead on it and were really, um, just aggressive just trying to, to make this happen. And, um, I also have to note, I believe, um, I don't want to misquote, but I think the, the girls' basketball team also had something to do with contributing to the funding for this as well. Um, I, if that's correct, Doug, is that correct?
Yeah.
To give some, you know, credit there too. So, um, we were just really in a supportive, uh, state of it, but a lot of people contributed to this happening. Um, so it was really, um, well-run. Margaret and Jason planned the whole thing. Um, just really to a T. It was webinar format. Um, it allowed, um, all the students to participate and as well as all of our staff members at the high school as well. And, um, you know, it was a combination of personal stories, um, and meaning behind, uh, many of the poems that, uh, Clint Smith has written, and he, he also recited them for the group as well. And, um, yeah, Maggie gave a great summary and, um, we also were able to get some feedback through a survey so that all the students and staff, um, had a survey afterwards where they had a chance to talk about, you know, what resonated with them. So it was really, really a great hour, the highlight of the day for sure.
So I'm just trying to be concise. I, I could add more, but I, I just want to, um, again, emphasize, I, I think that this was pointed out earlier, the work continues, right? Our, our, the work around budget, the work around MSBA work and information that we're providing to MSBA around the school, the high school project, um, curriculum work is continuing. Um, us kind of supporting teachers and faculty is supporting, um, and us working really, um, with an eye on increasing student time with a goal of getting back as soon as we possibly can. Um, is, it's present in everything that we're doing. Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Doug. I, um, and, uh, excuse me if you were going to, going to address this, but, um, another point that was brought up in the conversation, uh, with Senator Lewis and the other legislators today, um, and I've been following a little bit, you know, um, is this notion of how to address, uh, learning loss, right? So in, in some ways, we're talking about the short term. Um, but, but I, I would like to urge, uh, you and my fellow school committee members to also think about the long term. Um, and what the, 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 the debate seems to be centering around, uh, we, we, we can expect, I think we learned today that we can expect if the, um, if, uh, President Biden's new stimulus legislation is passed, we can expect some significant new resources for public schools, right? So one of the things where each of us is, uh, as districts are going to have to do is decide how best, how most effectively to use those funds. And one of the things that, that is coming up in a lot of conversations is, is, um, some version of an extended school year, right? Summer school, for lack of a better term. Um, but, but there's also consensus, and I certainly share this, that we don't want that to look like regular school and we don't want to do anything that, um, that contributes to the fatigue, uh, that continues the, um, you know, the, that, that puts added pressure or strain on, on the educators and the administrators that have, that have, uh, stuck with our students through this really, really difficult year. So balancing, um, trying to, uh, compensate for learning loss with, uh, sensitivity toward our educators. Um, and I think we can do that as a community, and I think it really will take a community effort, um, to, uh, create, um, a holistic, three-dimensional set of educational experiences for our kids that can, um, help recover some of what they lost this year. I mean, I really love the school committee, um, to, to, uh, to really embrace that conversation, uh, with you and your team, Doug, and, and to the point of, you know, maybe having a special meeting on it at some point, uh, in the early spring, just an idea, but I'm, um, I just started thinking about it and, uh, when, when we had the conversation with the Senator today. So I just throw that out there. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the, thank you for your words. Um, you know, first of all, let, just a note about learning loss. Um, that's something that's going to be a fundamental topic that is part of our budget. Um, it has come up in our Student Services Subcommittee work, um, through survey data. It is highlighted in our, in our survey that we've done with, with faculty, staff and parents. And, and Christine is going to do a very kind of quick update on the budget, um, and different scenarios that we're looking at. Um, but I'm sure one of the slides, it discusses this specifically. And, and Greg, just to be clear on the timeline, we're thinking about, um, intervention services on, on scale between 18 and 36 months, um, to help students over the long haul, over time. Um, and Kara is working right now with the elementary principals, um, on a literacy initiative to provide intervention services for students outside of the school day. And so these are just, you know, two of a few projects that we have going. Um, there's going to be more information forthcoming, I think, in the next month about, um, a project that we have going in the summer that focuses on science. Um, so, so more to follow. It's, if you had a microphone in our office, you could not have, uh, teed up our, our, our work better. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
Kara, you gonna, you gonna add?
No, uh, yeah, no, yeah, you covered it all.
I don't want to.
No, I was just going to say that the, the literacy, um, the literacy groups, we, we sent about almost 50 invitations out to elementary families today, grades one and two, um, to start up our, our focus, our literacy focus groups next week. So we've gotten just really nice responses back from parents, um, you know, willing to, to, to make the time work, um, even though it's outside of hours. Um, so I've just appreciated a lot of the responses I've gotten today from families. Um, so we're, we're on a good track. Um, hopefully, you know, ready to get going next week with this.
I, I think we have a number of projects in the works that are just really, um, innovative, creative. Um, I, and to be honest, I don't think anyone else is doing it and, and I, I couldn't be more grateful, um, with the ideas that are coming forth from our elementary principals, from our curriculum coordinators, you know, our secondary principals. It's, it's, you know, we're, we're quite fortunate here. We have a lot to be grateful for. So that's it for me at this point. Um, I'd love to turn it over to Christine, if that's okay with you, Amy?
Of course, yep.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I believe we have some slides. Is Ian sharing the slide?
Um, I'm not sure. Did you guys coordinate with him before the meeting?
We did. Ian, are you ready to share the slides?
By the way, if you guys lose me, it's because sometimes when, uh, documents are shared, I lose my screen, but I'll try and get back on.
Oh, here we go. Oh, here we go. Okay, so, so just like with all of our work since COVID hit, COVID really changed how we were doing the budget. We, Doug and I just thought before we really dive into the budget season quote unquote, that we would just give you an update about our planning. So it's really goes back to early fall. So can we go to the next slide? There we go. So we just want to talk overall about what our fiscal year 2020 budget goals were. Um, again, to be driven by the instructional strategy for Wakefield Public Schools, along with our core values. Um, I think you've seen that as a recurring theme. Um, we're also focusing on creating and maintaining safe teaching and learning opportunities for all students and staff as we adjust to the change into the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. We need to fund a faculty and staff of 578 adults in all seven bargaining units to educate roughly approximately 339 students in grades pre-K to 12 and post. And ultimately to be fiscally responsible, uh, responsive and sustainable while acknowledging the changing demands of COVID. So those are our overall goals. Next slide. So the objectives for fiscal 22, and I think, um, Greg teed this up perfectly. Thank you Greg. To address learning loss. Um, and Senator Lewis, again, it was his timing today was perfect as well. Um, it's, it's a recurring theme that we talk about it almost every day in central office. Um, to address it at all levels, um, intervention strategies and resources. We're also, and I know this is also important to, to the group, to include the five FTEs that were removed from last year's budget. To continue to replenish our PPE supplies and materials because our one-time COVID grants, as we know, will be ending this year. We need to complete our preventative maintenance on buildings in conjunction with DPW to maintain the improvements that we've made to date to our buildings. We're, um, really, we feel really strongly about retaining the three additional FTEs for cleaning and nursing services. Even as we work our way back, the things that we have done, it's just not going to be like flipping a switch and we're going to go back to in-person, no more cleaning, no more, um, contact tracing. So we're going to have to continue that. Um, we're going to have to have some retaining, some remote teaching positions. So you'll see that in our budget document. And also special education for out-of-district costs and service providers, what that, that's going to look like moving forward. More to come on that. Next slide. So also you've been talking, you've been hearing Doug talk about, um, the budget survey that we, um, sent out to families, staff. Um, the, the overarching, um, responses were about achievement, equity and opportunity gap for our students. Um, and we talked today about retaining, recruiting and developing outstanding teachers. It's one of the most important things we do is retaining good quality staff and making sure that they stay. Uh, we also heard today about, um, from Senator Lewis about educate, uh, uh, shortage of teachers and educators. So that's something we're concerned about, a shortage of substitutes. We're also working to develop a facilities master plan, including a new high school, so exciting. A renovated Greenwood School with attention to new developments and new enrollment. Developing a comprehensive plan for special ed and English lan- uh, learner support. We need to increase our course offerings in team and computer sciences. If this pandemic has taught us anything is that technology is so important to what we do. And we need to maintain our safety or required COVID-19 protocol. Next slide. So this, I call it the money slide. Everyone wants to talk about where we are and where we're going. So as you all know, in fiscal 21, our approved school committee budget was cut by $400,000 by the town. So you can see the three buckets, the personnel, the contracted services, um, materials and supplies. Uh, we have in fiscal 21, a budget of $43,576,659. It's what I report on monthly to you. It's how we spend our money every month. In fiscal 22, we've done our collective bargaining forecasting of current staff with additional FTEs. Um, that increases our personnel service line by $2 million. Contracted services, materials and supplies for an overall budget for 22 of $45,703,200. That's an increase of $2,126,501 for the magic number of 4.88%. Now again, we're still developing and forecasting, but that's, um, what our proposal is looking like at this time. Next slide. So we've done a couple of scenarios. Um, the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee has heard the different versions. Um, we've never really done a budget like this before, but we came up with three different scenarios of what basically school, Wakefield Public Schools is going to look like for next fiscal year. Whether we stay in a hybrid model, whether we're fully back in person, or as I like to call it, a hybrid of the hybrid. Which is having as many students back in person, but we still know we're going to have to still provide some remote services. So what does that mean for us as a district? We're planning on, um, proposing 11 additional FTEs, which includes the five that were removed from last fiscal year, the two science and the three special ed, which are outlined here at what schools. That, when we met with every principal, the, the request did not go away. In fact, the need was greater than the year before for these, for these positions. We're asking in addition to those five, to, we, to retain the two custodians that we hired this year under one-year contracts and to, um, maintain the one nurse that was required due to the contact tracing demands and screenings. We're also proposing to, um, retain three remote teachers for students who will not be returning to traditional model. Now, at this time, we know we, we're probably going to have to offer so- some sort of version of that. But that is the overall, um, summary of what the 11 additional FTEs will look like. Next slide.
Christine, I, I just want to add that, that in our budget that we proposed last year to school committee that was accepted, the positions that were included, the five positions that were not filled this past year due to COVID, those positions were contractual, right? Not only were they contractual, they were contractual with, with two C, two subsequent positions that were supposed to be adopted this year that are not part of this conversation because those would be moved out another year. Right? So we're just trying to get back to what we think is a baseline and a sense of normalcy. Um, while also meeting the demands and, and kind of an ever-changing environment. But go ahead Christine, I'm sorry for the interruption.
No, thank you, thank you. I view it as the five make us whole. The five get, get us to where we should be and the additional six is due to COVID and the additional demands on the district. Ultimately, I wanted to talk about, this slide talks about what Senator Lewis was talking about today, that, um, every year the governor releases his or her budget the end of January. And, um, for us, it talks about chapter 70 money. So they're talking about now, this is the first year that they're trying to fully fund year one of the SOA plan. Uh, but for us in Wakefield, that means that it, um, it increased the chapter 70 of $101,000, but $101,520. Which, um, this, this has sort of kind of got some life, um, through the Commonwealth because it talks about, yes, SOA funding is being funded, but we're seeing declining enrollment numbers overall in public education due to students going to private schools, homeschooling, et cetera. And the governor used those, um, reduced numbers to, in order to base the chapter funding, um, numbers. So yes, he fully funded SOA, but we see the reduction in our enrollment. So we're also hoping to see the stimulus plan. I, I think Greg was the one who was touching upon it or, um, when we were talking before, yes, President Biden is talking about the stimulus plan. But again, we have to provide a budget right now, not knowing what that stimulus plan is going to, to come out or what it's going to fund. And whenever the stimulus plan or COVID relief money comes, they always, um, advise about not, um, adding FTEs or individuals to those COVID relief grants. Um, I think, next, next slide. So that's basically it. It's just a highlight, a summary of what's to come. March will be all things budget. Um, Doug, I will have the book and everyone can't wait to get their copy of the budget book. Um, and, uh, we'll be presenting this on the full, but on the ninth. And we'll also have, um, a public hearing on, I believe it's the 18th. Amy and I were scheduling the budget hearing so we can hear from the public. Um, after school committee gets a first glance at it, then the public, um, can, can weigh in about things that they think we should be focusing on. Um, I'll just pause. Does anyone have any questions?
Yep, Suzie?
Just a quick one on the timeline that you were just walk, just mentioned Christine. So on the ninth of March, we'll review this in more depth. And then on the 18th of March, there will be a community, um, an opportunity for community to ask questions.
So the school committee will receive the full document, I believe either March 3rd or 4th. So in the weekend, reading the book and we'll present on the ninth, the full document and we can deliberate and talk about, um, we can dig deep in the lines, we can talk about revolving accounts. Um, all 60 pages of the document at once. But then we have to, um, after you're presented with the budget, we are required by law to have a public hearing. So that will be, um, after that on 18th. And then, um, it's anticipated that you will bo- vote on the full budget on, I believe it's 23rd. Then, then Doug and I will present this budget, um, the approved voted on school committee budget to the town.
Alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
We will also squeeze in a visit, sorry to interrupt, but we will also squeeze in a visit to FinCom on both before and after. So, go ahead Greg.
Yeah, thanks. And thank you Christine, really, um, clear, concise presentation. Um, another, uh, topic that came up today, it, it made me think of, uh, this in the context of the budget, uh, is, uh, the mental health demands of our, our staff and our students. Um, and, uh, we've invested as a, as a community, a significant amount in, in behavioral health services over the past few years. And I guess I'm operating under the assumption that those investments have paid off this year, uh, in meeting the increased demand for, uh, behavioral health, uh, services for, for our students. Um, but I just wanted to flag that, and, uh, during the budget deliberations, it would be, it, it, it would be helpful to me to know, you know, what those investments are in this coming year, whether there are significant new ones, how those new investments might be meeting the demand, um, as a, just another highlight.
Sure, of course.
Thank you Christine. Um, any other questions for her or comment? Thanks for the presentation. Do we have a gift tonight?
Oh, we do. We have a gift from Cooperative Bank for Parent University, which I believe, um, it's going to be, um, virtual, right Kara, in the spring? So we have a $2,000 gift.
Yep, yep. So we just started planning, um, this for, uh, Parent University. Um, we've, we've nailed down the timeframe to, to be over the course of three weeks and it will start off with a keynote speaker mark bracket, um, related to social emotional learning on March 16th. And then, um, we will have offerings on the 18th and then the following, um, two weeks, uh, last two weeks of March on Tuesday and Thursday at 7:00 PM. So we, we've nailed down the timeframe and now we're just, um, just finalizing the workshops that we'll offer. So more to come on that.
Thank you.
So that's it, budget.
I, I need to read a motion.
Yep.
Yep. Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $2,000 from the Wakefield Cooperative Bank for the virtual Parent University program.
Second.
Motion has been made in second for any discussion. The non-roll call.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Ms. Bayer.
Yes.
Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Ms. Guida.
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau.
Yes.
Dr. Burns.
Yes.
And Mr. Liakos.
Yes.
Thank you. And thanks again Christine, uh, for that, um, budget update. Um, next on the agenda are the subcommittee reports for finance and facilities. Um, you know, uh, it's pretty much everything that Christine just presented. Uh, we have been working obviously, um, to finalize the fiscal year 22 budget with them and, um, so I don't really have anything else to add because she pretty much, uh, thoroughly explained everything that we've been doing, but we are meeting, um, I believe Thursday. Is that correct? Yes, we meet Thursday, so more to follow on that. Um, labor and personnel? Oh, yep, Tom?
If, if, if I could, um, Amy, if, if, if you wouldn't mind, just if I could just add one comment under the Finance, um, Facilities Subcommittee. Uh, really it's just a follow-up on what you had started, but really, if, if you would indulge me just to, to increase the compliments, uh, to Doug and Christine. That, uh, you know, we, as you've mentioned, who we had been meeting, uh, at the beginning part of the year every week. Um, and then in recent, recent months, we've been meeting every other week, but quite honestly, in, in depth and in earnest around, uh, these types of issues, we had charged, uh, the administration with the development effectively of three budgets. Um, and that was no easy task and the Finance Facility Subcommittee, the three school committee members working with, um, uh, you know, Doug and Christine and their team, uh, really worked incredibly hard to meet, um, you know, all sorts of deadlines to drive, uh, to drive certain schedules. Um, to come up with, uh, the, the, uh, the scenarios that they, in some cases had to, uh, you know, almost creatively pull out of the air because of so many mitigating and moving factors. So I just really wanted to add, if, if you really don't mind, just another level of thanks for that tremendous amount of work that has been ongoing uh, since, uh, August frankly. Um, when we were, when we were, when we were reorganizing FY21, occurred all throughout the fall, the beginnings to the work to create an FY22 budget around three different types of options and scenarios. The work that we saw tonight in a, in a matter of, oh, a half, a dozen or more slides, uh, is really representative, I'm sure, of hundreds and hundreds of hours of work, the administration, um, and the Subcommittee, uh, but much more so the administration of course, been putting into, into that. Also wanted to add, there were two other very big parts of conversation that we typically have every other Thursday when Finance Subcommittee meets. Uh, that number one is a reconciliation of all grants. Um, as, has been mentioned with, uh, what, whatever President Biden may or may not, may or may not be able to get through Congress. We have had the, the generosity of the Commonwealth as well as the federal government since a year ago now. Um, and the reconciliation of, of grants against, uh, both reoccurring spending and one-time costs have been extraordinary. And the Subcommittee work has been really working and sort of, uh, supporting and monitoring in many ways the type of things that, that, that Christine and Bob on the facility side of things have been doing. Uh, and an awful lot of work has been going into that. Um, certainly we don't want to spend, we want to be able to recognize the difference between, you know, one-time grant fund and one-time cost and reoccurring expenses and routine town expenses, routine school department expenses. What, what are we able to share, uh, with the town? I mean Doug's compliments earlier to, to DPW and emergency, uh, departments, uh, can't be understated. Uh, we, we hear about it every other week. It's, so, um, there's a tremendous amount of work going, going into, into that and to making sure that, 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 that happens as well. And the last, the last thing that we've spent time on, especially the last two Finance Subcommittee meetings and, and Greg, you're going to get a, get a third compliment for bringing this up, is about learning loss. Um, you know, we, we landed at a place where we got sort of four sort of bullet items that are driving conversation around spending. Uh, but in what types of inputs and feedback we're hoping to get, continuing to get from educators and department heads and others. Um, and eventually Paris and the surveying that, that the, um, the Student Service Subcommittee- the student service subcommittee is doing. So there's some, some, some synchronicity there between finance subcommittee and the student service subcommittee on learning loss. So really lots of things have been happening, um, and driven by the administration, but, uh, you know, fully, fully participating is a pretty active school committee. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I appreciate the, the time to add those two things, but just another set of kudos to, to the team.
Thanks, Tom. Um, okay, moving on, the, um, labor and personnel, Tom again.
Ah, while I, while I have the floor, as unaccustomed to public speaking as I am, I'll continue to, uh, to continue to rattle on. Anyways, thank you. Um, so labor, labor relations subcommittee has been busy as well. We met this morning. Uh, we've been meeting, uh, bi-weekly, um, for some time now, uh, with lots of, uh, lots of balls in the air as well, not as many as, as some of the other groups, but certainly, uh, working uh, very closely with the administration and the, um, collective bargaining groups, uh, to make sure that there is as much of a seamless process uh, toward, um, making education strong and solvent and safe um, in this, uh, extraordinary school year. Um, so we, we're undertaking a bi-weekly review of operating procedures under the four MOUs that we all know. Obviously, we, we negotiated four MOUs between last summer and last fall. Uh, we're, we're on a bi-weekly basis, be, uh, be, uh, conducting reviews of those practically line by line, but in concert with, uh, with the, uh, the leadership of the, uh, the different collective bargaining groups to make sure that things that need to change are open for discussion, things that need to be affirmed are solidified, uh, uh, remain so. We don't want to waver in the type of things that we, uh, affirmed when we voted on those, uh, back in the fall. Uh, but at the same time, we need to know that these extraordinary times may demand some uh, flexibility in, in how things are adjusted. One such example of that, Doug spoke earlier under his report. We discussed the, uh, this morning, uh, discussed in some length, the likely changes around elementary, you know, scheduling. Um, so there was a lot of conversation around that, a lot of planning, uh, into, 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 into what that may and may not look like. Um, so that's important stuff. Uh, one thing that, um, the, uh, subcommittee labor relations would like to bring to the full committee for, uh, with a request that it be placed on the agenda at our next meeting. We would like to bring forward a resolution, um, that we're still drafting, so I gotta be honest, it's not prepared yet, but I could speak to it topically as we did this morning. Um, uh, we are recommending that the Wakefield School Committee uh, in, in endorse a resolution that would advance teachers and educators on the, uh, the, on, on the vaccination schedule. Uh, we should follow the lead of our superintendent and his colleagues uh, of other superintendents in the North Shore that have already taken this position over a month ago. Uh, teachers' unions, uh, not exclusively, but many of them have taken a similar position. Um, and I think that we should be doing all we can, and I think from our discussion this morning at Labor Relations, uh, I think I'm representing it well, that we should be doing all we can uh, to recommend to the governor and those in decision-making roles, um, that one clear way to get, uh, certainly to prepare for the fall, if not to prepare for time sooner than that, to get educators safely back into school and to get students safely back in school is to do as much as we can to get teachers and educators advanced on the vaccination schedule. So we're doing some research, um, on what a resolution could look like. It'll be, um, from the subcommittee, it'll be in your packet, uh, next meeting, and we're asking the chair to put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Um, so we talked a lot about that, you know, we, it, it, I think it remains this, this committee's focus, I think, and the administration's focus to do everything we can within our power um, to, to get students and, and, and teachers back in the classroom. Not everything is within our control. We can't, we can't control the things that we can't control. This is one of them. Uh, but we certainly can be advocates, and I think we, that's a, I think that's one of the things that we can do with this regard. So that's, um, that's a quickie around, uh, labor relations.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, Student Services, Darcy.
Yes, we, um, oh gosh, now it's been a few weeks since we met, but we reviewed, um, a survey that, um, Doug is sending out to staff and administration, um, getting input on, um, items, um, to be focused on in the budget. And then, um, the plan is to report that out. We have a meeting next Wednesday and to combine that survey data with the other survey data from the community and, um, share it all at once. I think that's what we decided, right? Committee?
Yeah. Yep.
Doug, I think that's what we said. So we have a meeting next Wednesday to finalize that and put that on the next agenda.
Sounds great. Thank you, Darcy. Uh, and Policy and Communications, uh, Colleen, do you have anything else to add?
Um, no, I think we spoke to, to what, what sort of, uh, surrounding our meetings. Um, but I just would like to further encourage the community, uh, students, staff, uh, residents, you know, all around to please, um, participate in the process as we've outlined. And if you are not able to participate in the actual events, to please continue to email us and reach out to us by, by phone, email. Regular mail is always lovely. So any, any way that works for you, we're here to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, future dates and agenda items, the next school committee meeting will be Tuesday, March ninth. Um, agenda items, um, if, if, uh, either Tom or Susie or someone in the labor subcommittee could just remind me, uh, to make sure that I place that on the agenda for you guys, that would be great. Um, school committee comments? Um, I, oh, yes, Tom.
Uh, 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 thank you, Amy. Uh, before we leave, um, before we leave the, the topic under future agenda items, um, I, I certainly don't want to represent to speak for my, my colleagues, but I, I know I would like to, um, just throw out there that if either the chair or the superintendent thinks that we need to be, have more meetings, if there are things that we're not doing, if there are things that we're not appropriately focusing on, uh, one of the criticisms, and I don't mean to respond to criticism, I mean to, uh, react, uh, and to inform. But if there's things that we aren't doing as a group that either the chair or the superintendent feel that we should be looking at topically, I'm all for having additional meetings. Uh, the, the, we cannot have, uh, a community unaware that we are focusing on getting kids back to school. Uh, it has been our focus for a, probably a year now. It certainly has been, uh, Mr. Lyons's focus. He's said it a thousand times. I think if he says it one more time, his head will pop off. Um, but in all, in all respect, if we need, from my own two cents, if we need to have more meetings and we need to have future discussions, I'm all in. I will be here tomorrow night, the night after, and any other time that the chair believes that we're not covering topics that we need to be covering. While we, while this mascot business is a distraction, it's a distraction that's laid upon us and we need to do our duty. But we can also multitask and do other things. We've been doing that all year and, and I think fairly well. Uh, but I, so I just wanted to say, if we need to have additional meetings, I'm all in, and please set them up.
Yep.
Great job.
Uh, okay, moving forward with the school committee comments, Mike.
I'm pretty exhausted at this point. I'm not sure I can form a complete sentence anymore, so I'm all set.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Darcy.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat.
Thank you, Darcy. Greg?
Thanks, Amy. Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to thank, uh, make sure I thank everybody. Um, I know all of us are really grateful for all the input we've received, uh, uh, certainly on the logo conversation, but also on the, uh, on the issue of, um, when and how to get kids back into the classrooms safely. Um, and I just wanted to, uh, give a shout out to the Wakefield Metco Program. This is the last week of Black History Month. And, uh, if you have followed their, um, social media, it's just really been remarkable. They've, they've been, um, posting, uh, links to, um, African-American, uh, literature, history, film. Um, I've learned a tremendous amount, um, and, uh, just really loved the spirit, uh, in which they, um, which they approach their public communications and it's just such a, such an asset to commute, to the community, and I just wanted to give a shout out to them. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Susie?
Um, I just wanted to make a, a brief comment about the meeting that, um, many of us were on today, that Jason, Senator Lewis, um, hosted along with kind of various, uh, representatives from, um, kind of neighboring communities and, um, superintendents and school committee members were on that call. Um, one of the things that, um, I, uh, spoke about and, and Tom just kind of talked about it from a resolution standpoint, is this idea that, um, that we, we really need to be, um, pushing for our teachers being vaccinated and, and um, how angry honestly I am at the, um, at the fact that in one breath, um, the state government can say that we need to be, have our kids in school more and in another breath, uh, deprioritize our teachers from being vaccinated. It's ludicrous. Um, and going into that meeting, I was angry about it only to find out that, uh, two hours later, that, that they were going to announce this, um, you know, this statement about bringing, bringing kids back into school in April full-time, which, you know, is, as Doug called it, is, you know, a political soundbite. The, the realities of making that happen are so much more complicated than getting up on a stage and saying, this must be true. Um, and, and to say that days after deprioritizing teachers in, um, in, in the vaccination list i- is just insanity in my mind. Um, and so I just, I wanted to share that that came up in, in, um, that meeting, there was another representative, Michael Day, who I believe represents Stonem and another community. He doesn't actually represent Wakefield, but, um, he had some kind of strong words to say about this particular topic as well. Um, and I think that the, 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 um, concern around this was, was well-understood kind of across the board from the representatives, which is one of the reasons why they were holding the meeting. They kind of wanted to hear from school committees and superintendents about what they're concerned about. And there were many other topics besides, um, uh, vaccination for sure. Um, but I, I just wanted to share that, um, certainly I am concerned about that. Um, I think all of us in, in Wakefield are, and, and I'm looking forward to seeing Tom's, uh, resolution that he brings forward at the next meeting for us to all kind of vote on and support because we, we need to get teachers prioritized if we're going to ask them to come back full-time. That's it for me.
Thank you, Susie. Uh, Tom?
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Amy. Um, just, just a couple of very quick thoughts, uh, I guess first and foremost, thanks. Thanks again to, uh, my, uh, my colleagues around the table as well as the administration. Um, even then we don't, even when we don't land altogether, we've, it's not for the lack of a robust and earnest and heartfelt conversation and, and, um, that's pretty, pretty genuine to me and I, that means a lot. So, um, I, I want to thank everyone for the, the passion and the heart that we, that we bring to this work. Also want to encourage everyone in town that is interested, um, to participate in Thursday evening's forum. Uh, the first of, of two forums that we're holding, as we know, uh, the second being the Native American panel. Uh, but Thursday night will be the first, well, not the first opportunity. Folks have been sharing their thoughts with us for months now, but uh, I would encourage, even if you have shared thoughts with us already, um, please, uh, don't be afraid to duplicate those thoughts and share them again Thursday night. It's a different forum. It's not just exclusive to school committee, you know, member email. Um, it's a community forum to share your thoughts with a larger audience, um, and, uh, it's, it's an important work. So I would strongly encourage, regardless of what side you're on, uh, please, uh, that's what the forum is for. Uh, take this first opportunity, uh, in a, in a public and community way to share your thoughts and thinking uh, to not only help inform the school committee, but, but your fellow, your fellow citizens. Um, the next thing, uh, did following up on what Susie, uh, made, made mention to most, most recently, but also Doug earlier tonight with regard to the commissioners, um, you know, you know, with commissioners' press conference this morning and some of the, you know, the, 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 the dichotomy of thinking around that. One of the things that I would very briefly like to read, uh, one sentence that came out in reaction from our state association, which I think is an important and powerful statement, reacting to, um, the commissioner's view that we need to get back in school, uh, and I think for some of the wrong reasons. Um, uh, you know, the reaction to, you know, the collection of data and MCAS and testing and those sorts of things are the very last thing that we should be focusing on at this time in getting kids back into school. And I think the commissioner is going to, going to have a hard time to separate, uh, some of that. Um, anyways, this, uh, they, they, one of the statements that came out, I just briefly like to read. "School committees should also be concerned that students not be rushed back to in-person classes in order to expedite high-stakes testing and enforcing standards of accountability that would be based on learning acquired during a severely disrupted school year." And I don't think that can be restated. I'm not going to read it again, but I don't think that can be restated. The conversations that we are having, the administrations having, and teachers are having across this district around learning loss are real. And, and they are, they are realizing themselves in the budget work that's being presented. And I think the last reason that we should be rushing back to classrooms is for, is for, you know, metrics around, um, standardized testing and, and those, those sorts of things. So anyways, I thank, uh, Mass Association of School Committees for releasing that and I, I wanted to at least share with that, that sentence as, as it was meaningful to me. Anyways, see you all Thursday night and thanks so much, uh, again.
Thanks, Tom. Colleen?
Thank you, Amy. Uh, Tom, you stole what I was going to refer to, so thank you for doing that. No, it was important to mention, I just wanted to mention their response, um, so that the community understands that, you know, there's a collective of, um, you know, that they may hear this, um, the soundbite, as we refer to it, um, but there's a conversation happening and continuing to happen and also, um, with our representatives and our senator, the conversation was, was very much, you know, alive for them because they're learning, you know, information sometimes at the same time we are, um, and, and they are, they are sort of um, prompted to do the work during that meeting. It was really like all coming out and, and, you know, we were able to speak to it and then sort of put the pressure back, well, not back on them, but as representatives and as senators. So, um, just wanted to, you know, give the community confidence that there's work to be done after such, you know, press conferences and statements. And thank you to all of you as usual. Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. Um, for, for me, under Chair, uh, School Committee Comments, I just have, um, one question in terms of the Native American panel. Um, how can, um, you know, native, different Native American tribes be added to the panel? Um, is there a way for, um, people to reach out in some way if, um, they would like to have um, additional, um, Native Americans be present at the, uh, discussion?
Yeah, I, I guess so. I mean, I'm gonna, uh, take, um, the comments from tonight and just refine an outline, um, that I can bring back, uh, to, uh, the school committee, uh, next week. I guess, uh, you know, if, excuse me, not next week for our next meeting, um, you know, which is, you know, in advance of the seventeenth, but, um, yeah, I mean, if there are others, um, you know, who meet the, uh, criteria that we set forth, um, who want to participate, um, we should consider that, absolutely.
Right. So is there, um, you know, any information posted anywhere on a website or anything that they can sort of reference to, uh, find out what the criteria would be or could, should they just maybe email, um, the members of the subcommittee?
Yeah, at this point, I would, yeah, we don't have anything, we haven't posted anything public. So, yeah, an email or a call to the, uh, members of the subcommittee or to the superintendent and, and the superintendent can pass that along to us for our next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all I had as well. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, seeing non-roll call.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Ms. Bayer.
Yes.
Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Ms. Guida.
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau.
Yes.
Dr. Burns.
Yes.
And Mr. Liakos.
Yes.
Thank you all very much for watching. That concludes our meeting this evening. I hope you have a great night and a great rest of the week.